matter and that we're part of the larger fabric and family of Los Angeles.
We know that Los Angeles is for everyone and it's important to celebrate each other. And that's what we're doing right now.
Preparing for college is an intimidating process, made a little easier by the Los Angeles Public Library. Their workshop at the Chinatown branch broke down the application process, highlighted what to expect, and featured a local success story.
So today, we're here at the Chinatown Branch Library for a Get Ready for College program.
We're here today to talk about the college admission process at the Chinatown Public Library as one of the Assistant Directors of Admission, and also as someone who's from Chinatown. I think it's a great honor to be able to come here, talk to the students, give a little bit more insight about it, and also share my story as well.
Oh, we got questions.
I showed up to the college workshop today because I am a rising junior and I wanted to know more about the college process and how to be, you know, get a better chance to getting like some colleges like UCs that, you know, are closer to me.
Today, I want to talk about the pendulum of approaching college.
Going through college is a hard, long process. Basically, you need to read all the applications yourself. You need to decide whether you want to go to a big school, a small population, what curriculum. So today is more for, instead of you diving through by yourself, there are people here just to walk you through, to guide you through, to give you pointers on where to go to find out more information on what you need.
Focus on readying by yourself and your own story.
So the difference between college and high school is a lot. I think applying to college, you realize that there's a lot, there's ways to kind of pursue your career for the long run. And also, it's a very different environment. You meet folks from all over the world. You are also learning about yourself, you're living on your own. So I think there's a big difference in terms of just kind of figuring out your purpose and you're also in an environment to do so.
Are there specific topics that students should avoid?
I think it's very important right now to get this information since there's so much misinformation about college.
I hope after this event that students are able to kind of feel less intimidated by the college application process. So I hope I was able to give them the confidence to apply and also ask questions and share their story with us.
So thank you so much for being here.
Providing a cleaner environment in South LA. Councilmember Curran Price celebrated more green spaces and links between the area's parks, rolling out an expansion of the Greenway Network in South LA.
Today, we're going to be announcing the expansion of the CD9 Greenway Network. We're excited to be here today to celebrate the importance of open space, green space, rededicating the commitment CD9 has to creating a livable environment for kids, for seniors, for all. Initially, our Greenway encompassed Slauson from Normandy to Compton Boulevard. We also quickly incorporated Avalon because along Avalon, we have three parks and a bike way. And last week, we inaugurated the Greenway along MLK. And so we've got an interesting network, a Greenway network in CD9. And today, we're going to be celebrating that. We're kicking it off this morning, and then we're going to take a bike ride.
Este corredor verde que es el que precisamente recorrimos ahora. A mí me llenó de alegría porque vi toda la comunidad, niños, adultos, mayores. Feliz nada más y este esperando que vengan más eventos, verdad, como este porque la comunidad lo necesita tanto y pues estamos muy felices y agradecidos.
Sentimos que estamos en una área que cada vez está más segura. Hemos visto que hay menos baches. Los niños pueden correr con sus bicicletas muy seguro, con sus scooters. Que no tenemos ese problema ahora de que se nos van a caer.
I really like it and I do see a lot of the community coming out and it makes me happy and proud that we have a place to come and gather where people can exercise and live a healthy life.
Some would say that District 9 is a concrete jungle, but what I see, what the councilman is doing, he's opening up green spaces. It's just wonderful to be able to walk into a community where you can have some peace, some quiet, and just think and meditate.
Al concejal ha hecho todo esto para nosotros, para nuestra comunidad. Ese es el legado de él y la verdad es que yo vi crecer a mi niña aquí y ahora veo cómo disfruta de los parques y de todos los beneficios y todas las cosas buenas que ha hecho para nosotros. Así es que eso es un llamado también para la comunidad, para que venga y vea realmente las zonas verdes donde están. Ayuda al medio ambiente y también como repito, este te ayuda sanamente, mentalmente, y también tu cuerpo.
Folks need to be able to enjoy their environment safely and the environment needs to be getting conducive for that. And so we encourage open space, green space, and folks to walk, to bike, and to enjoy the outdoors.
Four and a half million dollars of stolen cargo is recovered. San Fernando Gardens gets climate resilient and there's a new general manager at the city's El Pueblo Historical Monument. These stories up next on City Beat.
The Los Angeles Police Department's Commercial Crimes Division announced the seizure of $4.5 million in stolen property and the arrest of a key individual for retailing cargo theft. LAPD worked with LA Port Police and Union Pacific Police to recover tools, appliances, e-bikes, and other items which were being fenced through a storefront and online platforms. According to LAPD Chief Jim McDonald, protecting the integrity of the supply chain is vital to public safety as well as the economic stability of Los Angeles. Anyone with information on retail or cargo crime is urged to contact Crime Stoppers where tips can be reported anonymously. For more information, visit lapdonline.org. LA City Housing Authority, Hackla, was joined by Congresswoman Rivas to tour new energy-efficient upgrades at San Fernando Gardens. Federal funds of $3.5 million are being used to bring more sustainable and resilient living conditions to nearly 1,500 residents. Hackla is installing 448 energy-efficient air conditioning units donated by the Office of Mayor Bass and the LA Department of Water and Power. The community center at San Fernando Gardens has also been upgraded to serve as a resiliency center with backup solar power energy in case of a heat emergency. According to Hackla, extreme weather adversely impacts the San Fernando Valley and these enhancements will improve the quality of life for public housing residents. For more information, visit hackla.org. LA City Council has confirmed Dominika Lynch as the new General Manager of El Pueblo Historical Monument and its first Latina leader. A graduate of the University of Southern California, Lynch has more than 20 years' experience in nonprofit organizations supporting Latino and other underrepresented communities. According to Mayor Bass, El Pueblo's leader needs to preserve its history and activate business and event space, especially during this challenging time for immigrant communities. Lynch will begin as General Manager of El Pueblo on October 20th. For more information, visit mayor.lacity.gov/press.
Councilwoman Heather Hutt celebrated with community members as the city designated the home of Tom Bradley, a historical monument. This was just one of a series of African-American landmarks being honored, adding to the rich cultural tapestry of Los Angeles.
It's so exciting. We're at the home of Tom Bradley. He was a mayor for 20 years in Los Angeles and he was the councilmember, right here in the 10th District first. We're in Lamart Park and what we've done is designated his home as a historical monument. His children are here and they've been able to talk about their experience growing up in a community that wasn't really as multicultural as it is today. And then coming from that, we're going to St. Elmo's Village to talk about its contributions to the city. And then we're moving to Catch One, which was Jules Tyus Williams' big club for LGBTQ community.
The African-American Historic Places LA Project is a joint project between the City of Los Angeles's Office of Historic Resources and the Getty Conservation Institute. So some of these sites that we're designating are not architecturally significant or have an architecturally high style, so you could miss them. St. Elmo Village is an artist enclave, a set of 10 bungalows that were created by Rodrick and Razell Sykes because they were shunned from the art world. They couldn't get their paintings sold in mainstream white art institutions. And they also wanted an opportunity for anybody, people of color, anybody, to have access to art. And then Catch One, sadly, we lost Jules, who was the owner and creator of Catch One, and she opened the first black gay disco in the United States. And that was also during a time where folks were still ostracized. So that club became a haven for everyone. It's a symbol of hope for the LGBTQ+ community now, and it still operates as a dance club. So if you walked down the Tom and Ethel Bradley residence and that plaque wasn't there, or the signage wasn't there, you would think that it was an ordinary home. It is an ordinary home, but it has an extraordinary story. Tina's family bought this house at a time where there were restrictive covenants, where non-whites couldn't live in the community. So they broke barriers, not only broke barriers in the community, but broke barriers in the police force.
My sister and family moved here, my parents, brave as they were, to make that move in 1950, to come to this area where we were not appreciated, where we were actually hated. Riding down the street and seeing all the neighbors come out waving and I was afraid. Like my mother says, she didn't know what she was driving up into. Took the neighbors a long time to come to the realization that we were just like them. And because of it, there's a whole generation out there that are benefiting from the courage that mom and dad had.
So we're just showing what historical locations we have in the 10th District. It's a very exciting day, especially for folks that have worked hard to commemorate these spaces at a time where so much of our history is trying to be erased.
Summer fun at the pool is a chance to try out all the activities that LA City's Department of Recreation and Parks has to offer. Time to swim by the Westwood Rec Center and dive into their pool party.
So today, we're at the Westwood Rec Center and today, we're doing the pool party that we host annually every summer. We're working with Council District 5 and we're here to support the West LA community. And basically what we do, we introduce them to our Learn to Swim programs, our Small Crafts programs. And today, we have a fortunate opportunity to introduce our Wibbit that they're utilizing and they're having a blast. We have a Small Craft program where we introduce Learn to Surf, Learn to Paddle, and then we also do Learn to Kayak. So, you know, giving the community members an opportunity to see those that they don't normally see and it gets them more prep for open bodies of water.
My kids have loved coming to the Westwood Pool. My older one has been doing swim team, she did camp splash, and the littler one is taking little lessons here and now. This place is like home, we love it. They love the slide, that giant inflatable slide. They went on it five or six times. And then they enjoyed the food, of course. And I think they're going back in right now to go back on that slide, but maybe they'll do some paddle boarding too.
This is a fun park, I love it. And it also has a nice swimming pool. It's just lovely. What a jungle, didn't I call it? It's really fun, I love it.
I love it.
So all of our pool parties are free to the community. You know, we want to get as many people introduced to our aquatic facilities. We want everybody to know that they have a pool in their neighborhood and we want them to feel supported and we want them to be introduced to a lot of our programs, to make them feel safe and mainly to educate them on water safety.
Play LA!
Sex trafficking of minors is taking place in parts of Los Angeles. LA City Attorney Heidi Feldstein-Soto has made disrupting the demand her top priority. She highlights a number of tactics being brought to bear on those committing these crimes.
I came into this office and I was surprised at what I found in terms of how human beings treat our young people and our kids. And my first project, in collaboration with Mayor Bass and Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson, was focused on the sex trafficking of minors. Protecting our children and sort of finding ways to stop the exploitation and abuse of our kids has been one of my top priorities. I focused on what's known as the kiddie stroll, K-I-D-D-I-E, about little children. And these are kids who are taken out and paraded on the street for sex. In the Figaro Street Initiative, we have rescued over 200 minor children, the youngest of whom was 12. And we've provided, delivered them into the hands of service providers and helped them get off the streets. We've also focused on shutting down the motels that are crime magnets and who don't bring themselves into compliance with applicable law and on arresting felons, predators, kimps. We've referred, I think, 74 cases to the US Attorney or the DA's office for prosecution. And probably one of my favorite things that I learned in the course of this initiative is we send out Dear John letters. So part of our effort is to disrupt the demand from the adult men who are there to purchase sex from a young child. And we have surveillance cameras. We get a picture or photograph of the automobile with the license plate and of the man basically doing the transaction for sexual services. And we send the photograph and a letter to the registered owner of the vehicle saying, Dear Registered Owner, your car has been seen in an area known for human trafficking of minors. Please be aware we're conducting operations in the area and be more careful. The registered owner is usually the spouse. Now, we're going to stop the illegal, streetwalking trafficking of our kids on Figaro and on what's known as the Sepulveda Track in the Valley. For the parents of children where the parents think there may have been abused, please report it to the LAPD. They have officers trained in working with very young victims and they will get it into the right hands. If you're undocumented and you're not comfortable reporting it to the LAPD, my office has a helpline. We have a program that's dedicated to children exposed to violence. I note that I am the first female city attorney. I'm the first Latina elected citywide. And so many of our young victims are Black and Brown girls. From my perspective, there is no higher calling to a prosecutor than protecting the vulnerable, than being sure that justice prevails. And when you're talking about little kids, they don't have their own voice without help from their families and without help from prosecutors like me. And so from day one in the office, really sending out a message that abuse of children, and specifically sexual abuse of children, will not be tolerated, not in the city of LA and not by this city attorney.
A face-to-face community space that exposes arts and music to all. At the William Grand Still Arts Center, people can be themselves and become part of a greater collective, reflecting the community and supporting local artists.
The mission behind the William Grand Still Arts Center is one that is based in art and music exposure to the community, very intergenerational in our programming. That includes yearly exhibitions, there's concerts, film screening, workshops, after-school classes, all into sharing about art and music in the community.
You learn from everyone, whether that be the Black Doll Show, the African-American Composer Series, working with youth as well. So we're constantly learning from each other and I think that's something really beautiful about the center and what space it creates for the community.
One of the great things about our Community Arts Center is that we allow the community to be themselves as they are, using the language and vernacular that's local, using the codes and cues that are local, but also tapping into a greater discourse that's national and international.
The programming that is offered and the way that it is offered, it can foster relationships, but also just having a face-to-face space to come to, to convene, to find solace. Yes, it's important.
I really admire the center and have much love for the center, for the space it creates. Having a physical space that offers things that are tangible, you're able to connect with others.
So one of the things that's really important about a community arts facility, it is actually owned by the people of Los Angeles, meaning that the people of Los Angeles know and get exactly what they want. It's an added resource, it's exhibitions that feature local artists. So we want to continue this, we want to foster this. LA has been the place that a lot of artists have come out of and it will continue to be as long as we support community facilities like these.
In this week's Things to Do, Los Angeles Libros Festival celebrates much more than books. Go arm-in-arm to the Festival of Philippine Arts and Culture and join the city of LA for El Grito 2025. All this up next on Things to Do.
The Los Angeles Public Library invites you to read, dream, and celebrate with them for the Los Angeles Libros Festival. Now in its seventh year, the Libros Festival is a free bilingual book festival for the whole family. The celebration creates an inclusive cultural space to engage and inspire current and future generations of bilingual Angelinos. With 16 authors appearing during the day, there'll be entertainment and fun with Spanish language and bilingual storytelling, musical performances, workshops, readings, and community. Head to Downtown's Central Library for the Los Angeles Libros Festival on Saturday, September 13th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. For more information, visit lapl.org/libros. Join LA City's Department of Cultural Affairs and Phil Am Arts for the Festival of Philippine Arts and Culture. This year's theme is Arm-in-Arm, reflecting unity, resilience, and the vibrant spirit of the Filipino-American community. On Saturday, September 13th, come to Point Farm in Park for the music, stay for the food, and enjoy the company of fellow festival goers. There'll be music and dance performances that bridge tradition and innovation on two stages, along with vendors, a first-ever dog fashion show, and more. The 31st year of the Festival of Philippine Arts and Culture is on Saturday, September 13th, beginning at 10:00 AM and continuing until 6:00 PM. For more information, visit philamarts-fpac.org. Join the city of Los Angeles to celebrate El Grito, also known as the Cry of Dolores, taking place on Saturday, September 13th. This year, it's the turn of Councilmember Eunice Hernandez to host El Grito 2025, which will include a bell ringing on the steps of City Hall, followed by music performances into the night. Enjoy a community market of crafts and food vendors at Gloria Molina Grand Park along with live entertainment from community favorites. El Grito 2025 takes place on Saturday, September 13th, beginning at 5:00 PM with performances until 10:00 PM. For more information, check out the social media of Councilmember Eunice Hernandez at CD1LosAngeles on Facebook and Instagram. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao and from all of us here at LA this week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org and we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA this week.
Planning for emergencies is smart,
I'm calling item 8 special for an amendment. It should be circulating now or shortly. Thank you.
What, which item, 3, 6?
Item 8.
8, 8, all right. And just, members, just a note, this screen majiggy isn't working. So when you press your button, I might not see it. So just wave if you need anything. So any, any more specials? All right. Madam Clerk, what items are available for us at this time?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items 3 through 7. 9 through 14, sir.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 aye.
All right, what's next?
Next would be items considered by the closed-session items considered by the Budget and Finance Committee, and those are items 27 through 36, sir.
All right, we'll hear from our budget chairperson, Councilmember Yavaslawski, on 27 to 36.
Thank you, Council President. The Budget and Finance Committee considered and approved items 27 through 36 in committee on September 2nd, and I recommend we approve these items.
All right, if we could read the details into the record and call the roll on those items.
Yes, sir. For item 27, in the case entitled David Kelleher versus William McMoran et al., case slash David Kelleher versus City of Los Angeles et al., consolidated, there is a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement. For item 28, in the case entitled Kevin Jinks versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement. For item 29, in the case of Nazrat Zinnadi versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement. For item 30, in the case entitled Robert Papazian Jr. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $225,000 in settlement. Item 31, in the case entitled Adrian Tripp et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $250,000 in settlement. For item 32, in the case entitled John Castellano versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $1.8 million in settlement. Item 33, in the case entitled Angela Sendi Betancourt versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to reject the offer in settlement. Item 34, in the case entitled City of Los Angeles versus Purdue Pharma LP et al., there is a recommendation to approve the city attorney's recommendations. Item 35, in the case entitled Reyna Del Carmen Hovell et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $300,000 in settlement. Item 36, in the case entitled Armando Corona Trejo et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $950,000 in settlement. And those are the settlements, Mr. President.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 aye.
All right, and there's a request for item 34 to go forth with.
Good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, the ninth day of September in the year 2025. Public comment for this morning's meeting will be taken in person in this chamber. Madam Clerk, let's begin our proceedings by calling the roll.
Yes, sir. Bloomingfield, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hut, Hradato, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramen, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Javaslawski, fourteen members present and here, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of September 5th, 2025.
Councilmember Hradato moves, Councilmember Rodriguez seconds, what's next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Park moves, Councilmember Lee seconds, what's next?
Mr. President, today's Tuesday, it's time for the flag salute.
All right, I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise, face the flag, and join Councilmember Ramen in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, everyone. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, let's run through our agenda.
Yes, sir. Items one and two are items notice, items one and two are items notice for public hearing. Items three through fourteen are items which public hearings have been held. Items fifteen through twenty-six are items which public hearings have not been held. Items twenty-seven through thirty-six are closed session items considered by the Budget and Finance Committee. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objection, those items are now before us. Any specials, members? Specials, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of the rebuttance of caution, I'm recusing myself from item twenty-six because I am a landlord.
All right, item two-six, recusal for Mr. Price, any other specials, members? All right, seeing no further specials, Madam Clerk, oh, Councilmember Hradato, sorry.
You, Council President, I'm calling item eight special foreign amendment. It should be circulating now or shortly. Thank you.
What, which item, three-six?
Item eight.
Eight, eight, all right. And just, members, just a note, this screen majiggy isn't working, so when you press your button, I might not see it, so just wave if you need anything. So any, any more specials? All right, Madam Clerk, what items are available for us at this time?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items three through seven, nine through fourteen, sir.
All right, those items are now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen aye.
All right, what's next?
Next would be items considered by, the closed session items considered by Budget and Finance Committee, and those are items twenty-seven through thirty-six, sir.
All right, we'll hear from our budget chairperson, Councilmember Javaslawski, on twenty-seven to thirty-six.
Thank you, Council President. Budget and Finance Committee considered and approved items twenty-seven through thirty-six in committee on September 2nd, and I recommend we approve these items.
All right, if we could read the details into the record and call the roll on those items.
Yes, sir. For item twenty-seven, in the case entitled David Kelleher versus William McMoran et al. lead case slash David Kelleher versus City of Los Angeles et al consolidated, there is a recommendation to expend up to one hundred fifty thousand in settlement. For item twenty-eight, in the case entitled Kevin Jinks versus City of Los Angeles et al, there is a recommendation to expend up to two hundred thousand in settlement. For item twenty-nine, in the case of Nazrat Zinadi versus City of Los Angeles et al, there is a recommendation to expend up to two hundred thousand in settlement. For item thirty, in the case entitled Robert Papazian Jr. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to two hundred twenty-five thousand in settlement. Item thirty-one, in the case entitled Adrian Tripp et al versus City of Los Angeles et al, there is a recommendation to expend up to two hundred fifty thousand in settlement. For item thirty-two, in the case entitled John Castellano versus City of Los Angeles et al, there is a recommendation to expend up to one point eight million in settlement. Item thirty-three, in the case entitled Angela Sendy Betancourt versus City of Los Angeles et al, there is a recommendation to reject the offer in settlement. Item thirty-four, in the case entitled City of Los Angeles versus Purdue Pharma LP et al, there is a recommendation to approve the city attorney's recommendations. Item thirty-five, in the case entitled Reyna Del Carmen Hovel et al versus City of Los Angeles et al, there is a recommendation to expend up to three hundred thousand in settlement. Item thirty-six, in the case entitled Arma-
May I have your attention please, may I have your attention please? This is GST building maintenance. We are conducting work on firelight safety system. Please disregard any warrants or struggles in the case of actual emergency we will vote by you open the system. May I have your attention please, may I have your attention please? This is GST building maintenance. We are conducting work on firelight safety system. Please disregard any warrant or struggles in the case of any other actual emergency we will vote by you open the system.
For item thirty-six, in the case entitled Armando Corona Trejo et al versus City of Los Angeles et al, there is a recommendation to expend up to nine hundred fifty thousand in settlement, and those are the settlements, Mr. President.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, and there's a request for item thirty-four to go forth with. Without objection, that'll be the order. What's next, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, that would move council to public comment, sir.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, Madam Clerk, if you can prepare us for public comment. We will take public comment from now until eleven o'clock straight up, so please get to the mic as quickly as you can, start as quickly as you can, so we can get to as many speakers as possible.
To people providing public comment, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the council president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment on the agenda are items one and two, and items fifteen through twenty-six. So again, the items open for public comment on the agenda are items one and two, and items fifteen through twenty-six. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. I have a couple more announcements, if I could have the interpreters please make this first one aloud to the room. If you require a Spanish language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so the interpreters can interpret.
Si usted requiere interpretación en español, por favor haga pausa entre sus oraciones para que el intérprete pueda interpretar.
Don't worry, we will pause your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you.
No se preocupe, vamos a detener el reloj mientras que el intérprete está interpretando, de esa manera usted tiene la misma cantidad de tiempo que los demás.
One final announcement, as the council president has already said, we will take public comment up until eleven o'clock AM. So in order to help us run an efficient public comment period and to fit in as many people as possible, we would ask that you please wait until you hear the name that you signed up under called aloud or read aloud before lining up on your left-hand side of the council chambers. The order is randomly generated. So once you hear your name called aloud, please feel free to line up in any order on your left-hand side of the council chambers. Thank you.
I will begin by calling the following names, Alec Masropian, Harriet Elliott, Kelly, Maria Santos, Michael Ackerman, and Seba.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
General public comments.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Good morning, council members. My name is Alec Masropian, and I'm here on behalf of BizFet LA, a coalition partner of the LA Alliance for Tourism, Jobs, and Progress. Council members, the city charter is clear. Signature verification for the tourism worker wage referendum were due last Friday, September 5th. That deadline was missed by three days, and with it, public trust was broken. What's worse, the numbers don't add up. Our coalition submitted over one hundred thousand valid signatures, yet the verification process produced sky-high match rates for our opponents and record-high failure rates for us. That's never been seen before, and it reeks of foul play. We've asked the district attorney to investigate, because the people of LA deserve a fair, transparent process, not one clouded by shade and secrecy. The business community is ready to fight for fairness, protect jobs, and make the city livable again, but only if the democratic process is respected. Thank you.
Good morning, Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
General comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Suppose you got a phone call saying there was a bomb in a certain spot, what would you do? Would you take a modest action like sending someone with binoculars to have a look, or would you wait for a few more phone calls before you did something? Of course, you wouldn't wait for more phone calls, that would be negligent. And suppose people are victims of extortion, threatened with violence if they go to the police, would you demand a swift and thorough investigation at the merest whiff of a threat, or would you wait for multiple police reports? Again, any normal person would view delay as negligence, but your actual response to my complaint was negligent. The police are refusing to make required records and to seriously investigate allegations of extortion, and you are refusing to provide oversight. As I've said, the only solution is to ask the governor to send a handful of investigators from the National Guard to look into police misconduct, yet you've refused to make this modest request, and you've refused, okay.
Speaker, your time has expired, next speaker. Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Agenda item one is about street lighting. All I have to say is, what's going on with street lighting on Seventh Street and Alvarado? There's a twenty-foot sign accusing the mayor of, telling the mayor, if you retire, we'll turn the lights on. I'd like to know why, okay? I'm going to public comment now.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Um, my, back of my shirt says that Detective Gayheart said my son's case is unresolved. I went with the fellow that here, that acts like he knows everything, and he's actually a cop. He wants, it's a cop wannabe, and he believed the cops when the people in Internal Fed says my son's case is not resolved. My son's, my son's case is not resolved, they said it's resolved. Okay, I want to talk about another book called Transhuman Genocide, we're trying to reach the author, supposed author, who is a senator of Wisconsin.
I'm sorry, can you pause your time? Mr. Herman, you have been here for all of three seconds, and you have managed to interrupt this meeting and disrupt it already. Please do not disrupt the other public speakers when you're entering the room or any time during this meeting. This is your first and only warning. If you do it again, you'll be subject to Rule Seven, Rule Twelve, and subject to removal and exclusion. I'm sorry, Ms. Elliott, go ahead and continue.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, we're trying to reach this guy, Ron Johnson. He's very conservative, I'm the opposite, but I hope that he'll speak on it. I'm not going to say anything negative to him until it's all over, then I'll tell my heartfelt doubts about what's going to go on, but we're going to try to do it in here even. Thank you.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up the following names, Barney Barnes, Daniel Jones, Mark Callahan, Jason Enright, and Jovan Houston.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
I'll speak to the public at this clown show of incompetence on all available items in general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general, please begin with the items, go ahead.
Okay, none of the items on this kindergarten agenda by Sleazy Marquezi Dawson, and these council clowns address any other problems that their incompetence and corruption created. Number fifteen by indicted racist Asian John LAPD Lee is to keep a pool open on weekends. In my opinion, this item should receive a no vote. If indicted and on trial and on bail with additional charges corrupt embezzler, polygamist, current price is allowed to vote. In my opinion, an indicted and on trial corrupt embezzlement, polygamist that is on trial for voting on his wife's City of Los Angeles business should not be sitting there voting on these items, nor the public city business. Sixteen by Dimwit Nithia Ramens for tree trimming. Seventeen by incompetent Monica Lewinsky Rodriguez is for graffiti cleanup. Eighteen by Bob genocide Bloomingfield wants a stillbirth awareness day. In my opinion, there should be an anti-genocide of women and children of, in Gaza, language added to this motion. Nineteen by Dimwit Nithia Ramen wants an award for an assault, unsolved assault. This motion is a joke when black women are four percent of the LA population, but black women comprise over fifty percent of the aggravated assaults in Los Angeles. In my opinion, we should not add that statistic wording to this motion. Wording should also be added to the investigate why Sleazy Marquezi Dawson indicted and on trial corrupt current price and Heather Worthless Hut have done absolutely nothing to stop this horrible act. In my opinion, wording should be added to this ridiculous motion that would fund an investigation as to why these black Uncle Tom clowns sitting here are doing absolutely nothing to stop the assaults on black women. What do you think, Ramen? Number twenty by McCosker, who wants to keep a pool open a couple of more days. What a wonderful idea to solve the tens of thousands of homeless people in the Los Angeles, City of Los Angeles. Twenty-one by Soto Martinez is for an every one day. What a brilliant idea that would solve the one billion dollar budget deficit created when these clowns gave the LAPD a one billion dollar budget increase last year. I want to know why nobody else thought of this brilliant every one day. I want wording added to this item that would truly include everyone like the tens of thousands of homeless these incompetent clowns have created. I want wording in this item to include everyone like the thousands of people whose homes burned due to Karen Bass, Sleazy Dawson, and the rest of this clown council's own incompetence. In my opinion, every item on this kindergarten agenda is an example of when you hire clowns, you get a circus. General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Public, when you hire clowns, you get the circus of corrupt incompetence. Sleazy Marquezi Dawson again has absolutely no transformative items on today's agenda. What a clown. Sleazy Marquezi Dawson, CD-8 has the highest incarceration rate, the highest homeless rate, and CD-8 has the highest unemployment rate in the entire United States, over twelve and a half percent. CD-8 is a near-complete food desert. Sleazy D has spent over ten million dollars on luxury offices for himself while tens of thousands are homeless. Dawson was appointed by the petty pink place corrupt Armenian dictator Paul Klutz-Grekorian, a legendary fool. Criminally insane current price has been indicted on additional charges for voting on his wife's city contracts and polygamy. One billion dollar budget emergency, homeless epidemic emergency, two hundred seventy-five billion fire damage emergency, and Sleazy D and these twenty thousand dollar per month clowns. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Daniel Jones. I ask this question only so-
Which, sorry, Speaker, which items?
Uh, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Uh, I ask this question only so you can ask yourselves this, um, how do you feel about the Twenty-Eighth Amendment, the Equal Rights Amendment now?
So if you, can you hold this time really quick? If you have something to hand or circulate around, please make sure to give it to the sergeants after your public comment, or if you'd like to, you can give it to them now.
No, 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 no. Um, don't worry about that, this is going to be taken care of later. I have a proposal for this whole ICE immigration situation, and it's the president's idea. Why not sell visas to the immigrants and the people undocumented, you know, at a graduated price, you know, for how many years you've been here, this and that, because there's no reason for everybody to be chasing everybody around town. It's just not right. Why not just sell visas to the people who earnestly want to stay here and do the right thing, and, you know, a five-year visa, five thousand dollars, you know, five, five years, re-up it, get it done again. Thank you.
Hello?
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
A general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Hi, I'm Jovan Houston, I'm a member of SCIU and an airport worker at Los Angeles Airport, and I just want to take the time out to thank each and every council member that has supported us in the living wage ordinance and defended the workers of getting a decent wage here in Los Angeles. Thank you so much for all your time, your hard work, for sticking your leg out for us, we really appreciate it. Also, we just, we are tired of waiting. We are, we got this referendum passed by giving the workers a decent wage, now it's time to pay up. Please don't make us wait any longer, it's time, we worked, we waited over two and a half years, it's time to pay up now, thank you.
All right, good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, my name is Father Mark Callahan, and I live in the wonderful District One of the City of Los Angeles with our amazing councilwoman Eunice Hernandez, and I am here as part of this group here behind me who are standing because they won a great victory, and you helped them to win that victory, and I'm speaking on behalf of the faith community, particularly clergy and lady united for economic justice who have walked with this group from the very beginning, and we prayed with them, and we cried with them, and we rejoiced with them, and today we are grateful with them that you have supported this amazing historic wage increase, which is going to have ramifications throughout this country. Thank you for that, this is so important, and they need to be receiving that raise yesterday. So we need to urge you to make sure that this happens as soon as possible. Again, we in the faith community are grateful, we will continue walking with our friends here, our brothers and sisters, and be there and available for whatever they need, because we are a strong coalition, and LA needs to know how strong we are, and this is proof of it. Thank you very much.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call the following names, Audit LA, Candido L., Eddie, Big Amy.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
A general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jason Enright, I'm a member of the North Hollywood Northeast Neighborhood Council, and I'd like to uplift testimony from one of our residents in District Two who because of work can't make it out to regular public, uh, city council meetings. Chris H., tenant in District Two, said, "My wife and I have lived in Valley Village for over ten years in an RSO unit. When we moved in, our rent was twelve fifty, and it's now seventeen thirty-seven a month. As it increases year over year by three to six percent, we understand this is still below the market rate, but it is an almost forty percent increase since we've moved in. As a teacher, my wife's income hasn't increased forty percent in that time. My freelancing can't keep up either. A three percent cap, zero percent floor, it's sixty percent CPI for the RSO is more than fair." Council members, we urge you again to cap the rent at three percent. Thank you, have a great day.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up the following names, Tony, Herman Yu, Maria Torres, Donald J.
Okay, buenos dias, este, mi nombre es Maria Santos Gonzalez. Trabajo para Fly Food Group desde hace nueve años. Para mi-
Yes, hello, my name is Maria Santos Gonzalez, I've been working for Fly Food Group for more than nine years.
Para mi, el sueldo olímpico me ayudaría porque ah, la hipoteca de mi casa ha subido a tres mil seiscientos. Además-
Uh, the Olympic wage would help me a lot because my mortgage for my house has gone up to three thousand six hundred.
Además, ahorita estoy recuperandome de un cáncer que tuve que estar ausente.
And right now, I have been recovering from cancer, which has caused me to not be there.
Por unos meses, ahorita gracias a Dios estoy de regreso trabajando fuerte como siempre.
Uh, and as of a few months ago, thankfully, I have been able to, to go back and work.
Sin embargo, por mi ausencia debido al cáncer tengo muchas deudas que pagar.
However, due to my absence because of having cancer, I have many debts that I must pay.
Este sueldo para mi significa poder seguir viviendo gracias a los consejos, a los consejos que nos apoyaron.
Uh, however, this wage would permit me to continue being able to, to support myself in living. Uh, thank you to the council members who have supported it.
Ahora es tiempo para que las compañías nos paguen lo que nos deben.
Now it is time for the companies to pay us what they owe us, and that is it.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up Dana Waif and Diego B.
Good morning, Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos dias, sobre qué tema quiere hablar?
Buenos dias, un comentario público, mi nombre es Maria Torres.
Public comment, my name is Maria Torres.
Y estoy muy feliz porque el sueldo olímpico será implementado, luchamos y ganamos.
Uh, I am very happy because the Olympic wage will be implemented, we have fought and we have won.
Este sueldo olímpico para mí significa poder seguir viviendo en Los Ángeles.
And this Olympic wage for me means that I will be able to continue living in Los Angeles.
Nuestra renta acaba de subir trescientos dólares, ahora pagamos dos mil.
Our rent has just gone up to three, by three hundred dollars, and now we pay two thousand.
Y lo que me sobra de mi sueldo lo mando a mi familia en Honduras que depende de mí.
Uh, and the extra money that I have for my wage, I send it to Honduras for my family that depends on me.
Gracias a todos los que nos apoyan. Gracias a todos los que nos apoyaron y esperamos que las compañías paguen como se debe.
And thank you to all who have supported us. We hope that the companies will pay us what they owe us.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Before the next speaker begins, I will be calling up the last name Katie Smoking Scan.
All right, um, so let's start with, uh, 20, 21, 22, and then general. Yeah, okay, so start with item 20. (singing) That year, you and I were the same age, young, enjoying the colorful songs. But to create the dreamland new world, you turned away and walked into the storm. I saw a thousand adorable you, not looking back, smilingly leaving. How many youthful memories disappeared in the night,换来晨曦? I look up at the stars you saw, through the centuries of time, again. You smiled before I saw you, I understand. Now, let's move on to item number 21. I look up at the stars you saw, your feet have changed. You're still in the wind, dancing so brightly, in my heart, my heart. Raise your hand, I say the same誓言, in the dark, your smile so clear. You said you never regretted your life, dedicated this vast land. I'd like to hold my hand, embrace you, tell you everything has fallen to dust. A hundred years ago, you dreamed of the new China, so beautiful. I look up at the stars you saw, through the centuries of time, again. You smiled before I saw you, I understand. Let's move on to item number 22. I look up at the stars you saw, your feet have changed. You're still in the wind, dancing so brightly, in my heart, my heart. I've been by your side, the wind, the air is full of pain. But like a dream, my hands are empty, heart is also empty. I've been by your side, the wind, have you seen the same scenery? Want to disturb the clock, leave in the wrong time, all is empty, all is empty. Uh, now, it's time for general public comment. So, uh, as we are aware, um, whatever occurs on the news, that they are, uh, Supreme Court just ruled that all of the ICE operation and the Homeland Security operation will resume, will continue in the streets of Los Angeles and including every other places in the United States. And we call it as a big win. That's the reason why that we must elect council member Spindler in the year of 2026, because other than that, the Los Angeles will remove all the law enforcement officers on the street. The gang bangers will take over the street. All of the looter, rioter, repiste, uh, active shooter will take over the street. The only reason why we continue to make sure we have law and order in the street of LA is to make sure President Donald Trump remain in the office and make sure we continue to elect customer Spindler, so we will always have law enforcement ICE on our street.
And as we're waiting for the next speaker to come up, uh, to the previous speaker, again, as we've offered multiple times in the past, um, if you would like to request a foreign language interpreter, you are more than welcome to do so. Uh, just please let us know, or please let the clerk's office know about 48 hours in advance, and we will do our best to accommodate that. Thank you. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Hi. Uh, everyone should have gotten one of these. Um, I sent it out.
Actually, I'm sorry. Pause this time. We're going to hold your time. Mr. Herman, there is absolutely no reason for you to be standing directly behind the public speaker. You are trying to distract me, and you have been successful and actually disrupted my ability to listen to the public speaker. You have previously been warned, so, Mr. President, if you would like, Mr. Herman is eligible for removal. Pursuant to Rule 12 and 7, you are removed, Herman. Please exit the chambers at this time.
This is fucking bullshit. He told me to stand there!
You continued to disrupt the meeting and harold racial slurs at me. You are disruptive to the meeting.
You sir, I'm doing what I'm told! No! No! Bullshit! You made me stand there!
Mr. Herman, you have been ordered out of the room. You have distracted this body multiple times today, even if you were told to stand, that there is no reason for you to do those faces and attempt to distract and disrupt this proceeding. I would also note for the record that you are still disrupting this proceeding even after having been ordered removed. The only thing you have to do in order to provide public comment in front of this body is to not disrupt the meeting. I'm sorry, Speaker.
Okay, I'm going to call, I'm here to talk about LAPD hurting peaceful protesters starting in June. Um, I'm showing this hand because in the paper that I gave you guys, I gave, the voter clerk has 18 of these. Look at this image. Someone lost a finger on June 14th. On June 14th, someone lost a finger, okay? And you know what? On June 24th, city council members voted for it, except for city council, actually, Nymphaea. Why did you vote for 17.3 million dollars for LAPD overtime? Why did you vote for that? I understand all the other votes. Because they're cowards and don't care about peaceful protesters. Marquis, why did you vote for that? You have blood on your hands. Literally, look at the pictures. Someone's head got injured. Look at this picture. Look at the pictures, guys. You have proof, and you vote for it.
Next speaker. Right, so, Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Um, general, general item, I guess, general comments.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Diego Boyle, and I am speaking on behalf of the undergraduate Student Association Council at UCLA. I serve as the 2025-2026 Academic Year President at UCLA. With the 2028 Olympics approaching, Westwood and Los Angeles as a whole will welcome thousands of tourists and generate millions in revenue. But while our city profits, the workers making this global event possible, many of them students, service workers and their parents, and members of our community are being left behind. Student workers, despite facing rising costs of living and increased demands on campus, will not see Olympic-level wages or benefits. That's why we stand as 35, 34,000 undergraduates at UCLA. With, we stand in full solidarity with our union brothers, sisters, and siblings, fighting for a $30 Olympic wage. Economic justice means Olympic profits should not come at the expense of workers. Thank you, and let's fight for livable, affordable Westwood.
Speaker, your time has expired. So, ladies and gentlemen, I've been told that there are no additional names to be called. We did say we were going to take public comment through 11 o'clock AM. So is there anyone else here today who has not yet provided public comment but would like to? If so, please move to your left-hand side of the council chambers. And I would ask if the interpreters could just make that brief announcement aloud, just in case. Thank you.
Bueno, ya no quedan más nombres en la lista, pero si hay alguien más quien quiere dar comentario público, pueden hacer la fila en la parte izquierda de la cámara. Muchas gracias.
Oh, we got one more. Yes, ma'am, we can get the mic.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. All items?
Um, I, I didn't study this item, so I'm just going to go with public comment.
It's okay, a lot of, okay, go ahead. You have one minute.
But I think she has to, she doesn't realize she has to go over there. Um, yes, I'm here to tell you that, you know, with the cult of Scientology, that reports are being made, and you're going to have to take it seriously, and, you know, that there's no getting around it at this point. And just to let you know that I am not suicidal, that if, um, you know, they are going to try to, like what they did with the Masterson case, try to dismantle it, whatever, it's not going to happen. And, but you guys need to be on alert. Where, you know, people are tired of any kind of human trafficking, any kind of, um, abuse of elders, children, of wages, of everything. Enough's enough. Um, the victims are coming forward. They're going to keep coming forward. There's going to be a day of reckoning, and you guys are going to have to wake up to that fact. There, it's, it's over. It's, it's coming, and that's that. And with that being said, member Mr. Lee, you still owe me an apology. Shout out to Smoking Scan. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Nazarian?
Thank you, Council President. If public comment time is done...
I think we got one more speaker.
I'll, I'll speak after public comment is time.
All right? We're filling magnanimous today. All right? Uh, you have one minute. Good, good morning. Which items?
Thank you. Hi, just general public comment. I wanted to attach with what Audit LA was just talking about. The internal minglings of Scientology and their money and their affiliation with the city. I was a child born and raised in the cult of Scientology. I was a member as a child, doing slave indentured servant work on public streets and public sidewalks, under the control and disguise that Scientology was helping the neighborhood and being good PR for the city, which is not true. It is all a recruitment tactic. I wanted to express, Child X book here is going to be given to a bunch of you. This is a child's born and raised story from Los Angeles as a baby. I was then later born in 1986. There's many books I have in my bag of these are internal members that left 20, 40 years of being in this cult. And this is the evidence, criminal evidence, the, the financial ties, the, all the interminglings between the LAPD and the city. Please do your research. No more than that, you're a scientist.
Speaker, your time has expired. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, that concludes public comment for today's meeting. Mr. Nazarian is on the board.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to continue item 24 to tomorrow, Wednesday, September 10th.
All right, without objection. Item 24, continue till tomorrow.
Thank you.
September the 11th. All right. Councilmember Hurdado.
Yes, Council President. I'd like to withdraw my amendment for special item number seven, number eight.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, uh, what's before us?
Item 26 was called special for Mr. Price to recuse.
All right, we'll give Mr. Price the opportunity to vacate the floor, and once he has done that, we'll open the roll. All right, Mr. Price is recused on item number 26, 26. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right. Mr. Price will come back, and what's next?
Next would be items one, two, eight, 15 through 23, as well as 25, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Council has motions for posting referral.
All right, Mr. Nazarian.
Thank you, Council President. Items 25 and 26, uh, with urgent forthwith, please.
All right, without objection. 25 and 26.
(inaudible) please, may I get attention, please? This is GSE building maintenance. We are conducting work on fire safety system, please. Disregarding any more shows in case of emergency, we will notify you of this meeting system. May I get attention, please? May I get attention, please? This is GSE building maintenance. We are conducting work on fire safety system, please. Disregarding any more shows in case of natural emergency, we will notify you of this meeting system. Uh, just to double check, uh, Councilmember Nazarian, that is items 25 and 26 forthwith, sir? Yes. Thank you.
All right, uh, we have items for posting and referred. They are posted and referred. Uh, what's next, Council, uh, Madam Chair?
Uh, the desk is closed, sir. I mean, uh, the desk is clear, sir.
All right. Announcements, members? Mr. Soto Martinez.
Uh, thank you so much, Council President. Um, I just want to make a brief announcement. Um, I'm sure folks have heard this or read the LA Times article, that the attempted referendum, uh, to delay the minimum wage for tourism workers has officially failed. Uh, and I just want to congratulate the workers for all the work that they did to make this happen. But I also want to take this opportunity to speak to, you know, all the powers that be out in the city, that I hope this is an opportunity, uh, to reconcile our differences. Um, you know, it's led to a sort of a cascading effect of ballot measures that are now being discussed, but again, I hope this creates an opening where we can reconcile our differences and handle much of the bigger issues that are happening in the city. So, uh, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Soto Martinez, any other announcements? Councilmember Ramon.
Thank you so much. I did just want to, I know that in some meetings, we've been acknowledging some of the impacts of immigration raids in our district up top. Um, and we, uh, didn't do that today, but I did want to flag that even before the Supreme Court verdict in Council District Four, we had two incidents last week, including a raid at the Studio City Hand Car Wash. It's a icon, iconic, um, car wash. Uh, multiple workers were detained. Uh, we are still waiting for information on their whereabouts. Um, and Sharare Mogadam, who works with her husband at Elegant Balloons, uh, which is a really beloved balloon shop in Studio City, uh, was detained. She is a green card holder, uh, working her way towards citizenship, and she's been detained by the authorities, um, under questionable pretenses. So I just wanted to underscore the continued impact of these issues on our city, uh, including in our council district. Um, and I hope that as the Supreme Court decision potentially foretells a change and a deepening of what had been relatively paused, um, over the last few weeks, that we can move some of the urgent motions that were put forward, um, by this council in the days after the initial set of raids through this body, that we can see responses from LAPD on both responses to immigration raids as well as protests, which we may see more of. Um, and I think we have to make sure that we're ready to respond to these issues with keeping our residents' safety at the forefront of every response that we have as a city. So I want to, um, thank you, Council President, for offering space in this council for airing these stories and telling these stories and recognizing the horrors, but also ask, request that we continue to push our city to be prepared to respond to what seems like will be another escalation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Councilmember Ramon, and, uh, thank you for, uh, raising that. I think yesterday was perhaps one of the darkest days in the history of our country, where our highest court, uh, essentially legalized the practice that had previously been known as slave catching, um, that went away shortly after, um, the fall of the South and the, in the Civil War. Uh, and we're now in a situation where the Supreme Court said, these folks who are, we're not even clear they're law enforcement officers, can decide someone is an illegal immigrant by their race, by the language they're speaking, or the job that they're doing. Um, and so we want to make sure we mark this day, uh, in our city, and, uh, may Los Angeles continue to be the capital of the resistance. And thank you to all the members. I don't think there's a member of this council that did not put out a statement within hours of that decision. Um, so thank you to every member of this council and our city attorney and, and, uh, city controller and mayor for, uh, showing a united front, uh, against this assault on our city and also, uh, democracy in our, uh, country. And, uh, with that, I'll ask, uh, everybody in the chambers to rise for adjourning motions. And we'll begin with Mr. And we'll begin with Mr. McCosker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise to adjourn today's meeting in memory of Kathy Wooten, a lifelong member of the Watts community and a tireless advocate for victims of violence and their families. Kathy was married for twenty-five years to Patrick Wooten and was a devoted mother to six children, Ricky, Terrence, Patrick, Bridget, Brandon, and Kedjwan. In two thousand and eight, tragedy struck when two of her sons, Brandon and Kedjwan, lost their lives to street violence. Many of us can only imagine the pain and depth of that loss. However, Kathy, as a woman of God, turned her grief into purpose by ensuring that families in similar situations would not have to grieve alone. As a tribute to her sons, she founded Loving Hands Community Care. Through her organization, Kathy created her own community of healing by helping grieving mothers, siblings, and community members to make them feel heard and safe. She was well-known in the community for organizing her signature's Mother's Day brunch, where mothers who lost children to violence gathered together on Mother's Day to celebrate a day that is often so painful for them. I had the pleasure of being with her on several Mother's Day events. The most recent one, Kathy was clearly sick, and she had been summoning her strength to be strength to others. And she was there for the women who were in attendance, hundreds of women in attendance at that event. Loving Hands Community Care also offered several year-round programs in Watts, including a monthly grief support group, a mentorship program, and resources for families in need. Apart from her own foundation, Kathy was deeply involved in the Mayor's Grid Program, where she served as a victim's advocate. She was also in the inaugural cohort of the UCLA Watts Leadership Institute. In addition, she was honored in 2021 at SoFi Stadium, where her organization was given a fifty thousand dollar grant by the LA Super Bowl Host Committee Legacy Champions Program. Kathy will always be remembered for her unwavering commitment to others in spite of her own pain. She was just a phone call away to so many, ready to help in any way that she could. Her passing is a tremendous loss in the community of Watts. We wanted to share that her services are pending. But tomorrow, on Wednesday, September tenth, there will be a candlelight vigil in her honor from five to seven PM at Ted Watkins Park. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles and the beloved community of Watts, we extend our deepest condolences to the family, the friends, and all of the people whose lives she touched and forever changed. May she rest in peace and power.
Thank you so much, Mr. McCosker. Any other adjourning motions? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.
A lot of people, they don't want, they don't want the community to pet their horses, but we do. We like it, actually, because if we're at Hollywood and Highland, you're maybe with your family and you see us, and oh my gosh, I wanna pet the horses.
You're not gonna stop a four-year-old from coming up to the horse.
I'm not. I'm not gonna stop them. And it's a great thing because it's a positive training tool. I'm doing good, I'm doing good, I'm doing good.
Pet, but don't feed.
Yes. No, we don't feed in the streets, but we pet because...
You're beautiful markings, and you are just gonna be my best friend in the whole wide world. I know, I know. All right, Joey, you're coming home with me. Okay, all right. That's awesome.
Yes.
Very fun. He's got star potential. All right, well, this is the photo op opportunity.
This is.
This is the paddy wagon. What exactly is a paddy wagon? I'm using the phrase like, oh, hey, I know what one is.
This was, this was actually a unit that was used long, obviously, a very long time ago when horses did pull it. This was basically a paddy wagon. If they went around arresting people and they throw them in the back and they take them to jail. This is a centerpiece for probably almost all of our pictures, whether we bring in a horse, retire a horse. Duke just took his last picture in front of the paddy wagon before he went to retire where he's at. So this is a big, huge focal point for the Los Angeles Police Department's Mounted Unit.
Okay, so come here.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, we're gonna do it.
You have to. I mean, seriously, how could I not? Cool, all right.
LAPD reached out to us a few years ago because they had some horses that were going to retire, and they had heard about our program. And when Duke, their most recent addition to our herd, was getting to retire a few months ago, they reached out to us and asked us if we wanted to give Duke a home and to keep him working with first responders. The great thing for the horses is that they're still engaged with first responders. Now, instead of being on the front lines with them, they're helping them heal. Clients that are coming in, whether it be from substance abuse, whether it be from post-traumatic stress disorder, whether it be with mental wellness, mental health, what happens is they've lost control. And for a first responder, losing control is critical. Because many times, we're the problem solvers. We're not supposed to have problems. We're not supposed to talk about our problems. We're supposed to, what I like to call, handle the next. You go to that traumatic call, and then you're expected to go write a parking ticket. So at First Responders First, we are here for all first responders. So we have an eleven-hundred-acre ranch, and we have equine therapy to help them in their recovery journey. So in the cases of animals, especially a horse, they're just great resources of support for anybody that's dealing with mental health issues.
In this model of therapy, the team consists of two humans and any number of four-legged, but the two humans are a mental health professional and an equine specialist.